Our meeting that's been moved from the one that we had originally scheduled for next week. So per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but it can be viewed using the Zoom link on our agenda and streamed on channel 14, as well as the video being available on our YouTube channel after a couple of days. So I remind also everyone also that the meeting's recorded, and any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the session to first notify me as chair and all from the public as required by the open meeting law. Do we have?
I do not see anyone raising their hand.
If they want to record tonight?
No, I do not see.
Okay, great. Natalie, can you start us with your, with the mission statement?
Sure. The mission statement, "The Thaumuk Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency." Our vision statement. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Well, so first is public comment on our agenda. Please limit your comments to two minutes to items not on the meeting agenda, and there's no debate or action taken, but you can request to have something on a future agenda. It's just that we can't reply to things that are not on our agenda. Do we have anyone who'd like to make a public comment? I see that there's a lot of attendees. If you can just raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button, and then we'll know.
I do not see anyone yet.
And I don't either. Oh, good, Melissa made it. Okay, no worries. So we'll just move on to our update from the superintendent. Lori, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. So we've had several meetings to go over the plan. On the 28th, I presented at the school committee meeting, and the rest of my team as well. We presented, thank you. And then on Thursday evening of that week, on the 30th, we sent the plan to the community and just in a forum where they could actually read it. And then we had a forum on Tuesday night of this week. And I just want to say other than, we had actually no changes. The only thing over time which we did announce to the Morse Pond families and at the forum that we have moved Morse Pond from an in-person to a hybrid. So that's the only changes in the plan. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody that was involved in bringing this plan to you tonight. So we had teacher plant, staff planning groups at each one of our school buildings. We had over 100 staff members that were involved in the actual giving feedback, developing this, you know, school level plans that informed the larger plans. We had the wellness committee. Many teacher and staff members have given their time this summer. We also had the health and safety committee meet this summer. And so lots of people had lots of input. But I'd also liked the newly formed back in the spring, the staff and parent advisory committee that has every week has met for an hour, hour and a half, and has met asynchronously through Schoology, many hours of reviewing other state plans and other countries' plans, has looked at the research and the data, has asked questions. They've had presentations from Scott McGann. They've, you know, so really just helping the principals are part of that. And so the principals have reviewed their plans and received feedback. And so I just, I want to say that the plans that's coming before you tonight and before your vote, there's just been just so much community involvement and our staff involvement in the development of plans. We've had numerous emails and feedback through the info address, email address, individual emails that go to the principals. And all of this has been taken into consideration throughout the last several months. So I just, just a shout out to everyone. I know, you know, people are giving their time over the summer, and it's lots of time and energy and, and just the, just everything that's gone into this. I just really want to thank people, you know, for working with us because the plan is what it is today because of everyone. So with that said, I'm just going to go around and my team each has a few things that they would like to say as well. Sonya?
Thank you. To add to what Lori's saying, I'm very thankful for the team in the Office of Teaching and Learning, and truly for all of our educators across the district. You've heard me share in several reports about the summer professional learning we're doing and the numbers, and we're just about to reach the 100-member mark. And some of that overlaps with members of the planning and advisory teams, and some of that, that doesn't. But one of the things I wanted to share with you is some of the feedback we're receiving really quickly. And so I've had people write in that they saw their colleague talking with you at the school committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. And because of those presentations, they've asked, and they said, even if I'd missed my chance for PDPs, I'd still like to check it out. We've had some teachers who have influenced their colleagues on teams, both at Morse Pond and at Lawrence, as well as their grade-level colleagues, where they've decided to make plans for grade-wide or team-wide landing pages so that they're all coming together and creating a streamlined communication for families. And said, you know, I've talked to one of my colleagues. They're really enjoying the Modern Teacher Professional Development class. I thought I should participate. We've had a number of people who say, listen, I just talked to another colleague. I'm wondering if I can jump in. If not, I'll have my colleague continue to forward me the recordings. So a lot of people are choosing to forego the PDPs just to kind of feel that sense of community and be caught up. And finally, one that I wanted to share with you from a colleague who's been participating on a number of the committees, helping to get reopening going, that they're writing from their brand-new MacBook Air and loving it. They think that it's going to be a great tool for collaborating with their colleagues. And then they gave a shout out to our professional development this summer with Modern Teacher, telling us that it's the best PD they've received in a long time and that they're a huge fan. So not only are numbers continuing to increase, but they're increasing by way of word of mouth and collegial support. And I just wanted to share that with you, given that we had two of our colleagues come and share with you how they were using the professional learning to guide their planning. So thank you for that opportunity, Dr. Dore.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Sonya.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I just, on behalf of the Office of Student Service, I wanted to publicly thank our school nurses, our school adjustment counselors and guidance counselors, our special ed building administrators, our special ed teachers, our related service providers and school psychologists who have been participating in the school-based planning groups, our wellness committee, our special education parent advisory subcommittee, and all the discipline-specific work that's been happening. Their dedication to our students' education and safety is admirable. I'd also like to thank Anne Barnes, the Assistant Director of Special Ed, and Barbara Mitchell and Donna Bordieri, the administrative assistants in our office, for their tireless efforts to ensuring that we're prepared for the fall. The work would not be complete without the incredible efforts of each and every one of them. And I just wanted to offer a sincere thank you for all the behind-the-scenes work that's happening for, as we plan for our return.
Thanks, Joan.
Joannie?
I'd like to first say that I've had an opportunity to speak to quite a few educators in the system who have contacted me regarding some concerns. We've engaged in an interactive process to help quell some of those concerns and come up with ways for them to feel more comfortable coming back to work. And it's truly collaborative. The secretaries at the schools have been amazing. HR, shout out to Courtney Tzies in HR, because we have had a pretty heavy lift this year with posting and onboarding new people and staffing up for our new year. And our secretaries have been amazing also. Even though some of them are off, they're still checking their emails, they're still responding, and they're still helping to connect the dots while we're trying this summer to do our best to provide a safe start to the school year for everyone.
Thank you, Joannie. And Patrick?
Thank you for a moment to say thank you to some fantastic Thaumuk School staff. I'm going to start with just, the whole community needs to thank Andrea Burns and Greg Kennedy for the great work that they did making sure that meal delivery to our neediest students never stopped. So since March 14th, every single week, every single week without miss, we've, we've prepared and delivered somewhere between 1,800 and 2,400 meals every single week. The folks who showed up in food service included Lori Marks, Roberta Cabral, Sandra Lichardi, Janet Martins, Becky Swift, and Magali Chababi. Greg Kennedy's crew, and these are the drivers who went to the schools for parents who needed to pick up meals, and then for parents that did not have the ability to get to the schools to pick up meals, they dropped off meals to individual homes. That included Joanne Moniz, Nancy Clark, Tricia Johnson, Mary Kavanaugh, Cheryl Stoverwald, Diane Duarte, Melissa Purdy, and Robin Baucher. I'd like to then follow up with some of the best and most creative problem solvers the, the school district has are many of our custodial team and facility managers. Marcel Sanchez and Tim Allen at the high school have been doing a fantastic job. Don Drew and Kevin Pimento. I'm not sure how the district runs without these two men. Jeff Silvera, C.C. Costa, Paul DeAngelis, Tim Munson, and Kat Snyder have done fabulous work helping to make sure our buildings are, continue to operate. And then there's this behind-the-scenes work that doesn't always get recognized, but people need to get paid, and bills need to get paid. And regardless of whether or not there's a pandemic. And Lisa Kraus, Leanne Peterson, Tara Way, who started her job during the pandemic, have been doing a fabulous job, just incredible, incredible work. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to take a chance to say hi to Sharon Reed, because she, we all know how great she is, and she's been keeping the district running with us too. So fabulous, fabulous people who've been problem solvers and have just committed to kids since March 14th.
Thank you, Patrick. And I just want to add my incredible team that just spoke. And all of our principals have just worked tirelessly. You know, I'm not sure there's been any sleep this summer at all. But we, there's just so much dedication. And I just, so for all the groups, for all of our families, for the town of Thaumuk, you know, to Dr. Parkinson and Scott McGann, Julie and Suso really have been there for whatever we need, offering support. You know, Chief Dunn, Chief Small, I mean, it just, everybody and all the planning that we have done. So within our district and outside, this has been a lot of work. And I am just very grateful to everyone. And thank you to the school committee because you are fantastic, very supportive. You're thoughtful, your questions are great. And we just really, really appreciate the dialogue back and forth. So just, you know, so after that, just an update that we did get word that our deadline has been extended to next Friday. So August 14th, we still need to have the school committee vote since we're not having a meeting next week. I know we'd already rescheduled it because we thought the deadline for the plan to, to DESI was on Monday, but we're okay because we came in at the last minute. But here we are, and we have a plan to present to you as well. I just wanted to say that we have ongoing negotiations with our educators association. And by no means by turning in a plan does that mean the negotiations stop. And in fact, that's when the plant, the negotiations really begin. And so just to everyone, we're continuing to just work with everyone. We know that there will be tweaks. There could be continued guidance from the, from DESI. We could get a continued information from our health agent, from CDC. So there could be tweaks to the plan. But right now, I want to share a slide. And if you give me a second here, I think that I can. So what we're seeing here, at the forum, I had mentioned that there is some consideration of using a 5% positivity rate. And is, you can see that there are under the 5%. This is your 5% line, and under the 5%, there are actually 14 states. The, this is from Johns Hopkins, and the thinking is if you have, if you're under the 5% positivity rate, is that it is safe to open. And as you can see, we are right here at a, right now is a 2.88%. So right here's where we land. And so I don't know that this is going to be the rate that is going to be used to determine schools' opening and schools' closing. But right now, that is some of the thinking, that this is one of the metrics. It certainly won't be the only metric, but one of the metrics to determine when our local region is safe, safe to open. And so we, DESI just shared with us today that they are going to send us guidance around the metrics. And so we will have a little bit more information and guidance as we look at the, the school opening. As I said before, we are recommending that we begin the school in an in-person for pre-K through 4, and a hybrid for grades 5 through 12. And we, and remote for any family that chooses remote for their, their students, or for their children. So we also know that if these rates or any local data changes within the next several weeks or any time during the school year, that we may be going to a fully remote option. And that was the reason for the feasibility study from the state is that we look at all three models and see what is best for, you know, our local district. And so still looking at this metric and, and then also our local data, we are still recommending at this time that we open, you know, as stated.
Thanks, Lori. Terri?
Lori, the state's going to get bombarded with all these reopening plans. Do you know, do they have extra people? Do they have, I mean, the reality of this, the whole state's going to be descending upon them. Do, has anyone given any kind of thought to that?
So he, so Commissioner Riley indicated today that they have a large number of people dedicated. We've already got our feedback from the feasibility study that was submitted on Friday. That feedback came back today. We are good to go. They, as far as moving forward with, with our plan. And so they said that they are dedicating people to be able to review the plans and to be able to provide feedback in a timely manner. So I have, I have hope since there was so much turn, there was such a quick turnaround even around the feasibility study.
Leah? Are we opening this for questions in general or just based on that one slide right now? Well, let's do this. If anyone had questions for Patrick or Joan, Joannie, or Sonya, let's do those. And then we can deal with general opening of school. I have a question about that slide. That was my point. Is that, is that okay? Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, that was part of the, the update. I just don't want to get into all the weeds of the opening plan yet. So my question about the Johns Hopkins slide is that it shows over a seven-day period. And I see that 38, I think it was 38 states are above the 5%. Is that right? I, I don't have the slide in print, but it seemed like that. So my question is, what did the week before look like? And what did the week before look like? So just to get a sense of, are more and more states going into that over 5%? And might that be good data for us to consider in what the trend is? As, as we know, we're having an uptick right now, definitely in Thaumuk and across the state. It's not a huge one, but it is an uptick.
So we can watch the, our own state data. We have not been, we just have reached that 2.88 just recently, right in the state. And we are just above the 2% in Thaumuk. So it is a little bit higher. Our numbers were very low prior to that in Thaumuk. The, the two weeks prior was a .36 or 37 and a 68, I think. So very low. We have had an uptick. The state is slightly higher. But we can look at those, those numbers on a weekly basis. So, and even when I talked to Scott McGann about this before even sharing it, you know, that there, there are some of these threshold benchmarks, and we get the data. It's, you know, week over week, you know, for us to monitor and watch. So in the state, it's been very low. And so right now, it's, it's slightly higher, but it's still under, you know, that, that 5% threshold, if that's the threshold that's going to be, be used. And I want to caution, the reason why I'm talking about it tonight is because I did allude to it on, at the forum, and I did get some questions about, you know, a little bit more specifics about that. We have not received the state guidance yet, and I, so I don't want to put a lot of emphasis on it, but I did want to show where it was coming from, what I was indicating, and that it could be the potential one of the metrics for determination.
So I guess just to follow, so my, my question wasn't so much about the, our state, but kind of trends of the United States. And if we're seeing that more and more states are getting over that 5%, just knowing that we, we don't, I mean, we're trying right now to have a barrier with people coming into the state, but that there's really no way we can stop the transmission from state lines, I don't think. But just, just to get a sense of what that looks like over these seven-week periods, if more and more states are becoming over that 5%, what does that mean for Massachusetts in that context? Yeah, keeping an eye on our neighbors. Any last questions for the rest of the team or about the graph? And if not, we'll, we'll move into the reopening plan. So everyone got the new format of the reopening plan. It did have a couple, I mean, it was basically what we had already heard, but it was presented differently for us because it has to be submitted to DESI. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about, about the plan? Or any questions for Lori that didn't make it into your emails? Leah, you had something? Well, I feel like I'm monopolizing, so maybe we should go to somebody else. This is, this is, we're talking about the whole plan right now? Yeah, because the next thing up will be a motion to vote on it. So let's, let's deal with whatever questions we have for the team. Okay. Well, I will take it if nobody else has a question. Go for it. So I have a real concern with bringing in our pre-K through 4th grade into a full in-person model, knowing the number of students that we have in our schools and the number of staff. So my question is, how does Dr. Parkinson feel about this? How does the health and wellness? I just know that I've heard a lot about teachers feeling very uncomfortable. Surveys going out to teachers saying that close to 80% of teachers across the US don't feel comfortable going in person. So I guess my question is, why is it that we're having everyone come together in a school when people aren't feeling that that's necessarily the safest thing for them? Is your question about the elementary or is it about everyone? No, just pre-K 4, where we're having. I just want to make sure I answered the question. Yeah, because the, the plan is for pre-K 4 to all be coming in, right, in person? And then the 5 through 12 would be a hybrid where they, there would be two cohorts. So it would be half of the group coming in.
Right. So Leah, one, I think we look at the context of where we are, right? And our numbers have been very low. The, the, the medical profession is still, you know, recommending that our youngest students are in full-time. All the research that, that keeps coming in is still saying it's better for our students to be in. There's the social, emotional aspect. There are vulnerable students. And because the, the research, the latest research was about students 10 years and older, it was not about the young, young students. So, you know, and we're watching all that, right? I mean, that 10 years and older certainly started changing, you know, our, our minds about, you know, Lawrence. And then as we continue to try to look at Morse Pond for the students, but it came down to it that it just wasn't manageable. But our, and our numbers at our elementary schools are such that we can have six feet of distance for our elementary students in all the classrooms. We have fairly low class sizes. We're averaging, you know, 15 students per class size. We have some classes that are as low as nine, and we have a few that have 22, but they're in a large, very large space, and they're still having the six feet of distance. We know that, you know, what, you know, the recommendations, if staff and students wear their mask, if they stay distant, that we are safe. And so based on all that, and I have not heard from any of the school teams of a consideration of not coming in, in full at those grade levels. And then our staff survey did not yield that. Our staff survey really yielded across the district, not just at the younger grades, but coming back is what they preferred. That was the number one choice, was the coming back in, in person. So I, I know that that wasn't everyone's choice, right? But that was the majority of the choice, which matched our, our family survey, right? Our family survey also indicated that they wanted everyone to come back in person, right? Now, we've had to change that for a couple of schools, but it was still the preferred model.
Okay, so I'm going to have a one follow-up with that. Just, so the survey came out weeks ago. Has there been another survey with staff around maybe like what it looks like now in Thaumuk? Are people feeling differently?
So we have talked about that we were going to, you know, just to do a follow-up survey, not only with staff, but our families as well, just to get another, you know, feel for things right now, because that was early July. And now, you know, we're in the middle of August, and just to continue, you know, so we have learned things, we're watching the data. So certainly, we, I mean, we do want to keep a pulse on how people feel.
So just to clarify, so Dr. Parkinson and the Health and Wellness Committee feel that this is a safe model to go with, is that for the in-person?
He hasn't recommended anything different than that. I don't want to put words in his mouth. I don't want to, I'm not going to quote him. We can certainly, you know, if you needed reassurance for that, I could have had him here tonight.
No, I'm just wondering.
He's been a part of the meetings with the nurses, you know, weekly, and he's a part of the wellness committee meetings. There's never been any indication that he does not feel safe with us. I don't, Joan, I don't know if you have anything to add. You're actually meet with him with the nurses weekly. I just want to be careful not to, you know.
And I would agree with you. I don't, certainly don't speak for Dr. Parkinson, but as Lori said, there's not been indication of an unsafe plan with K, pre-K through 4 coming back. But that's certainly, as Lori said, as we continue to monitor all of the information that we have coming in, we, we keep in touch with Dr. Parkinson on a, on a weekly, sometimes daily basis through different forms of communication. So I will, I can certainly follow up with Dr. Parkinson. And if there's any explicit concerns, I'll share that with Lori, who could then, in fact, share that with the school committee.
So they've been involved, and I'm, I'm just for my own peace of mind of voting on this, that they feel confident, all of your medical people feel confident that coming in person for, for the younger students is the good way to go. And that's why the plan shows that.
Yes, yes, Leah. And, and Dr. Parkinson emails me, not on a daily basis, but pretty much. And I, and just shares like what's going, I mean, I'm just saying that if he had any concerns, I feel confident that he would be sharing that.
Okay, that makes me feel better. Thank you. Terri, and then Bill?
Okay. I want to just like hop on the list of people who praise all the work that people did to behind the scenes. And I imagine there were a lot of sleepless nights like, and I mean, things that popped out of me was like Patrick talking about the MERV filter on our HVA systems. We don't even all know what HVAC stands for, but then he was talking about the MERV filters and all that. And another thing that just blows me out of the water is the PPE that Joan described, that the special education teachers need to wear. I mean, you always think about the mask and the gown, but she was even talking about the paper shoes that they have to put on. So, I mean, the, the, the physical part, I think we have done monumental work on. And, excuse me, I think there's three things that parents wanted to have done as far as curriculum part goes, or, you know, the remote part, which was adding grading and adding taking attendance. And I'm not sure where the landing, what do you call it, landing?
Landing pages.
Landing pages. That came to me, but that's kind of like a syllabus with on steroids, right? It's got, takes you to the links and everything. And I know that the two teachers that presented, those were good examples of, you know, the, the things that answering what the parents were looking for and everything. But you know me, you've heard me before say, I just hope that the schoology part, which we have adopted, I, I know it's not my purview. It's not the responsibility of the school committee members to talk about curriculum and your methodology. But it's just, I have heard so much stress from teachers about the schoology part. And I hope that they don't have to spend those 10 rolling days working on that, because I think in coordination with the new platform, that someone's going to help, that have to help the parents get used to it and the students get used to it. And, I mean, I'm picturing the opening of school where a teacher is standing in front of a classroom. And now thanks to Sonia's good explanations, I understand about, I was so worried about the curriculum gap and everything. But I see now about the, you know, the, that everybody is going to be on the same plate. But if you're a teacher, I'm picturing, I'm teaching the kids in front of me. And then I have to watch for those kids coming in too. So that takes a lot of energy. And I hope they can use their opening days, you know, the soft roll-in days and all that stuff to work on those things. And we're all gearing, we're all assuming that kids are going to do just what we say is the protocol, but that's not necessarily so. So, I mean, if kids inadvertently or verdently, if that's the word, do it. So I just, I mean, I, it's, it's really, really a lot for nurses, teachers, everybody into. And I just, again, I just, I've said for three months that I just, I, I took out a statement from what Tricia Burchard was saying about the schoology, which is that you're, it's looking to the future, not just this year. And that's important. And I know something that we already did looking forward was the Maker Spaces tables, that I have told Lori how much I thought that those were just, I mean, great, because it's the blended learning, the kids working together and the asynchronous part of things they'll be doing will help them move forward and everything. But I will say again, at this point in time, it, it is an added stress and I just hope that we're aware of that. Okay. That was like a dollar's worth of talking, not just two cents.
I'll send you a bill later.
Okay.
Okay.
May I share something?
Sure, go for it.
So along the lines of how the modern teachers become a regional adoption in terms of pedagogy and strategy, the Cape Cod Collaborative is working on a regional use of schoology. So that's actually going to be an increasingly common approach to learning across the Cape Cod region. And so they've been in conversation with schoology and trying to look at competitive pricing because it is a mode of delivering instruction. So I don't think it's lost on anyone. And Terry, I appreciate you pointing it out, that it is a considerable adjustment, but at the same time, it's a, it's a one-stop shop for all of the tools and apps and resources and assignments. And it, you know, in many ways, you know, in 2006, when we adopted Power School, I think some of us who were here for that adoption felt similarly. And now, you know, if you, if you told them you were going to take a system like that away, you know, the questions and concerns or the return to the bubble sheets and things like that, for those of us who remember that. So I really do appreciate you bringing it up and, and we've made a concerted effort to structure that and to really differentiate where, you know, if people are at entry level, then we're going to stay and we're going to support them there. And depending on where they are in their growth, be able to, to, to provide supports and to meet them with a relevant professional learning experience based on that place in their professional growth. And along the way, opening professional learning does have to focus in part on Google Classroom pre K to six or schoology seven through 12, because there's still some work to do to bring units in. I think the professional learning time that we dedicated in June and, and over the summer, for those who took advantage of additional compensation we could add, was to bring in the first unit or two and recognizing that the year's worth of units all have to be brought in and coordinated. That's going to be an ongoing part of our support. And having conversations with department heads and other administrators, I think that they have created some very thoughtful plans around that. And, and as we go, Terry, I'd love to be able to come back and, and share where our progress is. And, you know, even where our growing pains are, but I do appreciate you sharing that. And so I just wanted to let you know that we're becoming part of a broader regional response to digital and remote learning and blended learning. So I just also wanted to share that we're not alone in, in our journey forward.
Bill, you were next, but John, was your comment about the collaborative schoology thing? Because I saw it pop up right at that same time.
No, it's unrelated, but I can share another collaborative note too as well. And the good news that the, the masks that including Falmouth in order to arrive in Newark the other day. So that's a good idea. But I'll wait for Bill's point.
Great. Thanks. Um, go ahead, Bill. Sorry. I didn't mean to skip you.
Who's in charge of the five percent? Is the state looking at the five percent? Is that going to be district-wide locally? If, if parts of Massachusetts go up above five percent and say the Cape doesn't or other sections, then who makes the decision about the possibility of going totally remote? Or the possibility of just maintaining what you're doing?
I think those are all excellent questions, Bill. But as I mentioned, he said that he was going to send guidance. So I, I actually don't even want to venture to, to say, you know, I would hope that there may be some decisions that may have to be made at the state if, if there's a statewide change, but I certainly hope that regionally and locally would be what we would be looking at.
And secondly, has the state done anything in reference to projecting testing? Is there going to be testing for people? Are teachers going to be tested? I know the governor yesterday indicated that he's looking at a rapid testing. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that means. I would imagine the efficiency is better. The turnaround time is better. But I don't know a lot about it, just that there's discussion. So I think with the comments made at the forum the other night, I thought was that DSC did not recommend testing. And if I'm correct on that, that kind of surprises me due to the fact that we're sending all the programming to them. And we're leaving teachers and kids when they come into that school. Do we know that everybody's in good shape? Everybody's negative? Those are concerns that I have. And I realize that when you're dealing with schools and you're dealing with kids and teachers, you're dealing with high numbers. But we should be dealing with high numbers in the United States at this point in time. So I think that's a question that needs to be maybe supported by DSC a little bit more? Or the state a little bit more? Or just to look at it locally? I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think I need to throw that out.
So I will say that the DSC guidance was not recommending testing. I know the governor did talk about it. And Scott, when he was here with us, mentioned the rapid testing and possibilities for a Cape-wide rapid testing response team. But all of these things are in the works and, and we don't have anything specific at this time, but we will stay on top of it and I will share with the school committee as we have more information.
Thank you.
John and then Melissa?
Okay. Yeah. Just as far as with Dr. Parkinson, I would love to have him on anytime we're talking about medical issues. That'd be a great resource. Then as far as the question, I, I think it was kind of answered when Leah spoke and you addressed it, Lori, that I was, you know, curious as to if teachers or support staff or, or even bus drivers and whatnot had anyone, you know, opting out or looking to take a lead for the, you know, for the, for the school year. And if so, if we had a resource of folks to supplement that. And I was surprised actually with the collaborative that, you know, thinking that, you know, a lot of the folks may be in the, in a bracket that might be at risk, that we did not have folks, you know, looking to opt out. So I think you kind of answered that, but that's one of my, you know, questions. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is with regards to sports, I know we're still determining that. But kind of looking back at the, for the prior year, if the students that were participating in spring sports, it would be great if they could get, you know, a varsity letter if it was deemed that they would have gotten one. And on a similar note, depending on how sports go moving forward, similarly, and then any kind of band exercises that are done, you know, or, or any extracurricular activity that would normally have some sort of recognition that a student could have for, for future reference for college applications and whatnot. If that could be put forth as well somewhere.
Thank you, John.
I feel like I said someone was next, but I can't, oh, Melissa, sorry.
That's okay. So can I speak to the, the rapid, the rapid testing and the testing? As it was told to me when we asked at my employment, at my place that I work, we would have to be tested every day. So twofold, the rapid testing is in, in of itself pricey and not a hundred percent. And it is what it is. But if we're talking about testing our staff coming in, how often are we suggesting that we test them? Every day, every week, every three days, every two weeks? It's great to get a baseline. But then what do we do with that moving forward? Because we can, we can talk about that. And I, 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 I love the security and knowing that everyone has the same baseline walking in. But moving forward, how often are we then testing?
Very good points, Melissa. Thank you.
So I want to jump in because mine is a testing-related question too. So since we're on testing. So one of the things that I hadn't picked up on in the earlier versions of the plan, and I actually didn't even catch it until looking through it again this afternoon, is that, and correct me if I get it wrong, but the way I read it, if a student has symptoms, they either have to quarantine for the required time or be tested in order to return to school. Did I get, am I right in how I read it?
So yes, I will tell you that it is somewhat confusing, because if you look at the different parts of it, it's a little bit. So I am asking for clarification and I actually was going to have a more lengthy discussion with Dr. Parkinson around that. But yeah, but yes, well, right in how you're reading it. But it was the, whether one had to be tested and tested negative before they can return or just the symptom-free after seventy-two hours.
Okay. And so my question, I guess then is maybe just in those conversations that you have following up on that, is to be sure that we, we acknowledge and provide for the fact that our wealthier students are going to have their parents take the day off and drive them to dentist and get a rapid test and pay out of pocket and all those things to get them back to school. Whereas a lot of our families don't have that as an option. And we don't want to create more inequity because we're requiring a test that some people have access to and some people don't. So that was my only concern around testing. And it sounds like we probably need more information about it anyway. And then I just don't know what a four by four block is, and I'm hoping somebody can tell me. Because I don't know what that means.
That's a great question. And I'm going to turn that over to Sonia, because this is her, one of her specialty areas.
So the high school has six periods at the end of the day. Lawrence has seven. The high school students end up with seven periods because of the, the diagonal. So in order to reduce the number of times students pass in the day and to, to fulfill their obligation on time on learning, what they did was they put four periods in each day. So they've also added a period that they're looking at with Clipper time in mind. Or something like Bulldog time or something like that. And so what happens is because you end up with four periods in a day, it's called four by four, right? So you're four each day, but they call it a block because it's a longer period of time. So rather than calling a period, they call it a block. But it's just a, a way to talk about how they've broken down the time. So they're actually increasing the number of periods and then just having half on one day and half on the other to try and reduce the transitions in time in the hallway.
Okay. So they'll have the same number of classes, but they'll be longer and half on one day and half on the next day. So, and that also reduces the number of kids a teacher would see in a day, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. John?
Just to follow up to the prior question. So just, I just wanted to clarify that we're, that, that we're good, that, you know, not going to be any issues with staffing, fulfilling staffing. And then with regard, with regards to if we did get a positive test and, you know, if, if we could give thought to a minimum threshold that, you know, say X number of kids choose, X number of students choose virtual. And then test code positive to a degree where there's such a low number of, you know, let's say fifty percent choose virtual off the bat. I'm not sure. I'm just throwing out a number. And then thirty percent of the, of the students or staff for that matter are not able to be in the building. So let's say we have twenty percent of our population in the building. Is there a percentage that we have, or I put it out there that we should think of a number that we'd say, okay, well, at this point we'd go all virtual? True part of the question.
So I'm going to let Johnny talk about the, the staffing issue, because we actually don't have those kind of numbers. And just on the family survey, we're somewhere between, you know, it's, it's not as high as twenty percent. We're still kind of scrubbing the data because there was, you know, that does take some time. But we're, you know, as the first round was at six percent. I know it's higher than after we got the second round of survey data and, but it's, it's not that high, nor was it for our staff. But Johnny, do you want to talk a little bit about the staffing?
In terms of filling our current vacancies? Is that your question, John?
Yeah. Or just, just, you know, have we gotten, you know, have we got any kind of an overwhelming number of people wanting to opt out? And if we did, you know, do we have folks that would be able to replace them? And then kind of a long-range question on their behalf, you know, are they, then when they, they can come back, I assume if they did take a leave for a year or something like that.
Okay. No, we don't have an overwhelming number of people who opted to take a yearly leave of absence or to opt out. There were a couple of people who were thinking about it, exactly two. And one person has made a decision. And another feels comfortable with the accommodations that we can make around safety. And I think that it's a very individual situation for all of us who, who work outside the home in terms of making these decisions. So we work interactively. We work together to talk about how we can mitigate some of the risks that they're worried about. And I'm pleasantly surprised at how many creative ideas people actually offer, which is really great. And also the sense of relief that they express from knowing that we have thought about the safety of people who have higher risk factors or who live with someone who may have high risk factors. Because these are all, you know, I would venture to say to all of us today in this meeting have had to think about it ourselves for us and for our families and our neighbors. And that's, it's not any different for our employees. But we have not had an overwhelming. But we have not had an overwhelming number of people who opted not to come back or who've processed with me wanting, wanting to leave the district. On the positive side, I've had to approach substitutes in a different way. And those, one, for their own safety, right? We certainly don't want our substitutes to be bouncing around to different schools because that puts at risk and it's also not safe for our school buildings. So we are identifying substitutes who are committed to coming in, knowing what the safety measures are and committing to working at one building. And that's a, it's a pleasant surprise, I'm not, I'm not surprised in the, we have people who are willing to step up and roll up their sleeves and be part of helping children and adults get back to work and back to school and back to learning. That piece is not surprising at all. We're, we're getting quite a few every single day so that we can staff up the schools with people on hand. We're also not operating the same way. So it's important for all our substitutes, along with the staff, to be trained on how we're operating so that we can all keep each other safe. It's, it's a situation. We can have as many safety processes and procedures in place. The principals are doing a phenomenal job of turning that pancake each and every way to look at where we can be safe and what we forget. And they're doing an excellent job of that. But at the end of the day, we rely on all of the adults being thoughtful about how they're taking these safety measures and keeping themselves and their colleagues safe as well. So I'm actually really pleasantly surprised at how creative the teachers I've been talking to and the teaching assistants have been at providing ideas that they come up with, either out in the community, they saw something or heard something or, you know, something on TV that's helped us think outside the box too.
And we're lucky that we can follow up on those and afford to do those things and have PPE and make those accommodations. You know, we're in a great position to be able to do those things. Bill?
Are substitutes going to start day one and are they, excuse me?
What's the second part of the question?
Are substitutes going to start on day one? That's number one.
Yes, they're actually going to start before day one.
Okay, so they're basically are going to be permanent substitutes, correct?
They've committed to coming in during our orientation and training so that they're part of that orientation and training. They know how the buildings are functioning now. And then they've also committed to staying in full time for at least the first two full weeks of school because once our students come back and we're, we're living our plan, any tweaks, any adjustments that need to be made, the subs need to be there to live them too, to know what they are. And then after that, we have, I would say 90% of the subs that have committed said that they could stay full time every day. We're seeing through October. The only reason why we're reassessing at the end of October is because nobody has a crystal ball to know how this is going to turn. And so at least by October, we can reassess if we still need them full time. And if that's the case, then we'll keep them full time to re-assess again. And if not, then possibly it could be on call, but to your specific building. We still aren't going to have them hop around the system. Their flexibility and being able to work with us on that is amazing. We're committed to them as well, their safety and their employment. But I think professional understanding that there's so many factors and variables that we have no control over that all we can say is that we're intentional about reassessing and seeing where we are.
I realize substitutes don't make a lot of money. So I would, my concern would be if they're coming in on a daily basis, are they getting a substitute rate? Are, is our districts open to make adjustments within that structure?
So we have made an adjustment in the structure and they're not getting the per diem rate. Essentially, if you're a substitute who works in a 20 consecutive days in the same assignment, you have a higher rate. We're starting everyone at that higher rate for their commitment.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I think that's it for that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a follow-up question for that. So I think this is definitely a concern I've heard from parents around substitutes because if, if a teacher gets sick, you know, and understanding how to deliver both, you know, remote and in-person instruction might not be something that the substitute necessarily is proficient in. And it might be a long term, pretty long term, you know, if we're waiting for 14 days or if the person is sick and it lasts longer. So I guess it, I don't know, I don't know where my question is really going, but just acknowledging that this is a really tricky situation. And then I had a follow-up question kind of for Patrick around fiscally. If we have to be paying for a lot of substitutes, we had the opposite problem last year, right? Because we went to a full remote and didn't have to pay for substitutes that would be in our schools. But if we have to pay for a lot of substitutes, is this something that we could be using? Maybe there's a fund coming out, the 102 fund?
Yeah, you got it, you got it. There's two, there's two grants that are coming or allocations that are coming directly to school districts. One is Essar and one is CBRF, COVID Relief Fund. COVID Relief Fund has to be used first and then Essar can piggyback on that. And they're wide open for how we're going to use them and they're supposed to be used exactly for these purposes. These are, it's a perfect application and use of funds for those, those grants.
Great. So that makes me feel fiscally sound there. Thank you.
Any other questions about the reopening plan? Okay, so is our motion to approve the district's reopening plan as presented and recommended by the superintendent?
Kelly, I'm sorry, I do have one more question.
Didn't you do this to us last time?
I know, I'm sorry. I, I just like, I was ready for there'd be lots of questions during this time. I was just at another school committee meeting where I work and it lasted for two hours around questions, so.
And I do think, you know, I don't want the silence to have people thinking that, you know, we're just not being thoughtful about it. I did really push people to email their questions last week. And so I know that some of the, the information that's been coming to us has already addressed a lot of things. I just don't want the public to think that we, we're just rolling with it and we had a million questions all of which we had answered.
And that's what, I'm just going to be asking a question that I've already asked. And I, just because I want to put it out to the public. So one of the questions I had, and this is as a parent and as a working parent, trying to figure out how to juggle a one week on, one week off schedule. So I wanted to know how Falmouth determined to come to that one week on, one week off schedule, what the process was and really in thinking about why is that the best model for Falmouth? And is that health and safety related? Is that what people are thinking is best for students? I'm feeling very, that it's very hard for my family. So I'm wondering, you know, what the thought process is for that? And if families and staff and who was involved in the process?
Yes, thank you, Leah. So when we first started, remember, it was just the high school in the hybrid. And so they certainly went through a lot of iterations of the schedule. And we are going to have those out for everybody soon. Because Morris Pond was the latest to join and they've had less time to be able to go through that whole process of selecting what they, the staff believes is best for their school, right? And so we will be coming out with the schedules, you know, very soon to share with you. But to go back to how it's decided, so each school-based team has been grappling with the schedules and what they think is best. Some of it is the health and safety related. Early on, it was stated that the one week in, one week out was the safest because the staff and students are, you know, together longer and then apart for longer. So that, that absence helps with, you know, the exposed, exposure to fewer people at one time, right? So for the staff, they're seeing one group, one cohort for a week. They're exposed to less students in much of the same way why the block schedule was readily adopted because you're seeing less students in a day, but you're seeing that same cohort over one week period. As the, I did ask the, the high school team when I met with them if they, you know, are looking at that Monday, Tuesday and then Thursday, Friday as a different, you know, kind of cohort. And they did. And I did, you know, tell them that they could walk through that, that process, but they really did go through it and they came back that, no, they really do believe for two reasons, not only the health and safety, but the week in, week out just actually worked better for the entire schedule. And so, so twofold. And I think that works for the high school, right? Lawrence went through a similar process. I think they're very close to putting their recommendation, you know, on the table. But they have definitely chosen the weekend, week out as well. And I, and I think their major reason, reason really is about the health and safety, which, which I respect. And we want to make sure that our staff feels as safe as possible. I'm going to talk a minute about Morris Pond, not that they have arrived at a decision, but I think the dividing line over the weekend, we read a lot of recommendations about the different models at different levels. And at the junior high, that middle school and the high school, the recommendation still was the weekend, week out. But at the level of Morris Pond, the recommendation was really that you could do either, right? So we're constantly learning. So the, the staff right now are looking at the two models, Monday, Tuesday would be Group A and Thursday, Friday would be Group B. And they also are looking at whether Group A would be the one week and then Group B would be the other week. So they're walking through that process. But I think that because of what the science is saying, right? And, and the research is telling them, they have a little bit more options where I think the seven through 12, it really did lean and push for the health and safety to be that, the other model. So, but, but as far as how it's being decided, it's the, the school teams are grappling with it, working through it and they're making, they're making the decisions. So if you look at the districts around us, you know, very similar, except that, you know, even at the, the older grades, and they looked at that, right? They looked at the region. I know that Principal Gans also, she was in communication like with 60 principals working through, you know, the process to see, you know, what, what the best models are. There are the middle school and high school level, they are doing models where it's Monday, Tuesday and then Thursday, Friday. But, you know, this is what our team wanted. And I, you know, I really want to back up the, the hard work that our teams have gone through in making those decisions as I will do for Morris Pond as well. I'm talking about the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday only because the Wednesday, remote Wednesday, you know, having that, that day where the, the staff can see all the students, right? Because there are two cohorts, but they're really one, right? They're one within a course, they're one within a class. But to see them remotely on one day and being able to, to support all the students at one time. And that is the model that's been very popular, you know, for all of our districts surrounding us and across the region. So I, I think that we're going to see elements of that across the schools. And that's just an early, you know, kind of assessment of the schedules. They're still working and I want to give them that, that time and that room to do that. But I certainly hope that within the next two weeks, we will be able to have something to present to you and to our families. I don't know if that's helpful, the answer to the question?
Follow up on that. So as, as a parent of kids who are in multiple schools, it would be extremely difficult for me if there were different hybrid models that were going on. Because I need, I'm a, you know, a working parent, I need to have my children at home together. So I know that was part of the initial survey, so just putting that out there. But just a clarification around us voting today, we're not voting on the model that you're choosing, right? That's not what our vote is.
You're not necessarily voting on the schedules, but you are voting on the hybrid, right? So you're voting the in-person for Kated through preschool through fourth and the model for the five through 12, the hybrid model. So you are voting on the model that we are going to begin school with.
So we're, we're voting on that one week on, one week off model?
Well, no, because we haven't decided that. What you're voting on is that it's hybrid.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't have schedules to you yet, right? So you're voting on the, yeah, and I want to give, you know, I mean, I, they're still, you know, surveying the entire staff, you know, at each building and, you know, they want to get feedback. And I want to honor that process of having, you know, people get, having feedback into what the schedules look like. But the, the hybrid model where we'll have 50% in, in the building or maybe a little bit more because we are, you know, honoring our special educational programs and our highest need students. So, you know, it will be a little bit more probably than half in each. But that's what you're voting, is the hybrid model where we have some remote and some in-person.
Right, and not the exact details of that. And so we will just be kept informed by you as to what the model will be moving forward. Okay, thank you.
And I did want to just speak to, not only for the committee for that one question, but just for anybody else that's listening. We are, the principals are working together to, to look at that, the sibling and honoring the siblings as that, which is, gets a little bit tricky if Morris Pond selects a different schedule. But I'm also working on a solution for that as well. So we're, we're, you know, problem solving through, you know, at each step. And I'm hopefully, like I said, when we come back together or even possibly prior to, I'll be able to get something out to you on details and, and being able to offer some relief for families that are worried about childcare at the Morris Pond level.
Any other, Lisa, I thought I saw your hand pop up. Did you have a question or did we answer it?
I actually didn't really have a question. I just had a, I had a comment to make. But I just, I, you know, in line with, you know, Terry making comments earlier and of course the administrative team, I for one wanted to thank Lori and her team because week after week after week, the communication has been very clear. It's easily evolving constantly as we know, waiting for guidance from Desi. And I can't even imagine the amount of hours that you guys have put into this. And the marathon meeting we had at the last school meeting, hours and hours of you going over what your plans were. And then on, on Tuesday, just this week, the open forum and all the questions from the parents that were so beneficial. I just really think you guys have done a great job and I know that whatever we end up landing on is going to be, you know, put forth with the best effort and the best decision for the kids. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Well said.
Incredible team. Thanks.
That's much better than how I was going to say it. Thanks Lisa. Okay, any other questions? Yeah, are you sure? Okay.
I think I'm okay. Though I would like, I think it is beneficial for the public to hear kind of the questions we did ask because I think that they were good questions. So I don't know if other people want to share, just, just so people know that we did, we took a lot of time to, to look at this plan. And, and yes, I, you guys have worked so hard on this and, you know, the responses were very thorough. And I just, I, I don't want, I don't want the public to not know that we were asking all of these questions. So just if, if there's, if anyone else wants to share a question, I think it'd be helpful.
John?
I actually appreciate Leah doing that and, and on that note, again, the sort of the billion dollar question is, and once we do have, and it made me think of it too when we talked about the siblings, once we do have a positive test, you know, for example, a sibling in another school that, you know, was, you know, then having to quarantine and whatnot, you know, sort of some of the, just a brief overview of some of the procedures that we would do when, when we get a positive test.
John, I don't, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you looking for a quick explanation of how we're going to go about that if we get a positive test? Are you looking for a quick explanation of how we're going to go about that if we get a, a positive test?
Yeah, just any kind of, any kind of information of, okay, here's what we're going to do, here's step one. And then, you know, so this group is, and then, you know, again, how that might affect the other schools and whatnot. Just any, any kind of feedback on that'd be great.
And Lori, I know you're waiting on guidance from DSE, but do you have an overall sense of what that'll look like?
Right, I do want to assure everyone that even, I mean, we're, I think after we had Scott McGann on before, I mean, I think we're pretty clear on that we're going to get self-reports before their actual confirmed reports through the health department. But I've had, since that extensive conversations with Scott, that, you know, he's basically there to help us. He can't act on self-reports, but doesn't mean that he can't provide us guidance in making the decisions. And we do have the DSE guidance on, I certainly hope we're going to get more detail around that. But we have the broad DSE guidance around, you know, how we decide, you know, so we're going to have a bus cohort of students, the ones that ride the bus. And then they also have a classroom cohort. So those students are now in two cohorts, right? And so making the decision of, you know, if someone tests positive, you know, that classroom, you know, do we track it with siblings? Then you have the bus, and so the bus cohort. So all of those type of decisions, you know, none of us are claiming to be experts on how we do that. But that is what Scott McGann is trained to do as well as the VNA. And so helping us do that, and we, we can't wait for, you know, you know, if we have credible self-reports, I definitely want to make decisions based on that, right? And do that before we wait for days, sometimes when, you know, the report becomes an actual case. So even if on the self-reports, we're going to have support in, in doing the, the tracing and knowing who, whether it's a classroom, whether it's a whole school, whether it's classrooms across schools or the entire district, right? Or, you know, however that looks, you know, we will be making those very thoughtful decisions.
And do you have to submit the plan for how that's all going to be done to DSE as well? Or are they leaving that to us and our health department to work out?
Well, following their guidance, you know, making assumptions, we are signing off to follow the guidance. And then, and then definitely at the local level is, is what part of that guidance is, is that, that you have your local agent help you through.
Thanks. Melissa?
Thanks. So I just want to clarify that if we have reliable self-reporting similar to the maybe for graduate or the afternoon before graduation, will Scott be acknowledging that? I, I just want to be crystal clear on that because I feel like it wasn't really clear from his office, his perspective. I, I certainly am not trying to Monday morning quarterback that situation. I just want to be clear moving forward. If we have a legitimate family, staff member, whomever, reporting that they have a positive test, yet it hasn't hit the database yet, which was part of the conversation on that Friday evening Zoom meeting. Will we have support from that office? I, I, I feel like that was a bit of a hiccup.
Yes.
And I just want to be crystal clear moving forward. Like I know that there is always, we run the risk of, well, I have a, I'm reporting myself positive, but are, not to say that people would report positive if they were not. I try to look for the good in people, but I also kind of know how things happen. And I just want to be clear moving forward.
So I, I want to be careful. He, he can't acknowledge, right? The only thing he can acknowledge or is, and, and that he acts on himself are the, the reports that he gets through Maven. But what he can do is support us in us responding and acknowledging self-reports, okay? And then help guide us, right? But he can't take action until it is a positive for him. So as we talked through that, that was kind of what he was trying to say the night before graduation, was that he can acknowledge, but he wasn't necessarily disagreeing on our decision of we had self-report. We thought it was reliable as it was and, and to act upon those, right? And he can be there to help guide us on that. But the, the distinction is he can't act until he has a positive case. So if that makes sense.
It does. I just, I, I kind of don't feel like we were well-supported from that office. And I certainly, I feel like I'm kicking a hornet's nest and I don't really mean to, but I, I feel like it was, it was a challenge. And I, I, I hope, am I making sense? I hope that it's not that way. If we have a reliable, like we had a reliable that Friday afternoon, which was part of my questions, then I just, I don't want it, I don't want it to pick up our process.
Yes.
So I am just going to bring up, a lot, most of my questions were already answered. And I don't remember whose question this was, but I just pulled up the, like the list of questions that came from Lori or not questions, just information that came from Lori. And I think the only thing that I'm sure we haven't touched on is that Jawani has posted for additional staff for things like monitoring the buses, monitoring the bathrooms, monitoring the hallways, custodians, health assistants, all those extra people to help make sure that all the puzzle pieces are fitting together. And hopefully we can find people that are, are up for it to step in and do those things. But that was one thing that we hadn't touched on is that we are looking for extra people to help.
Do we have families or parents or grandparents? Do we have volunteers offering to help with bathroom duty or bus duty or hallway duty? I know that a lot of people have reached out to me and I, I don't know that they've reached out on the district level. Is that a possibility? Does it have to be a paid position? I know a lot of people that have said, I'm willing to come into school on my day off to make sure that the bathrooms, that my, that whatever they assign me bathroom, that that's monitored properly. Or the hallway or is that an option?
So we have to be careful because of the guidance of not having visitors and, you know, volunteers in the schools right now, keeping down the number of adults that are in the building. But employees are different, right? Because they, they essentially have to follow all the rules. We have, you know, so we do have them posted, but I will say, if there are people that's willing to volunteer, then please come apply and let us pay you to be, because, you know, as Patrick said, we have the additional finances to pay for all these positions. What we're actually concerned about is that we're not going to have enough people to actually apply for them. So please get the word out that we really, you know, want to hire these additional people to help in our schools. So that's probably, I mean, as much as we love our volunteers and, you know, we just have to look at it for this, right? This timeframe volunteers are going to be a kind of challenging to be able to do.
Melissa, go ahead, it's okay. I'm sorry, I, I just want to, I'm thinking of the fiscally responsible side of me. I, I know that we have grants to cover this. I, can we just be, can you just tell us how that's being paid for, Lori?
I'll give that to Patrick then.
Yes, Patrick, thank you.
We have this, and it's not just Falmouth, it's every district in the state of Massachusetts has an, a CVRF grant allocation that is specifically to be used for, to cover startup costs. And it's to be spent down by the end of the calendar year. That's a, that's a short timeframe for a school district to spend down the money. It's an ample amount of money and it can be spent on all these types of startup costs in which, which we're, for Falmouth, we're focusing it on, on people. So we have the funds to do this over the next few months.
Patrick, just, isn't there a stipulation too that it can go throughout the school year for employees or?
Yeah, the, while, not, I'm going to, I'm going to tell on myself. While we were on Zoom, the state did issue some guidance on this that I have not actually read. So that I'll know the more details about the guidance as of tomorrow morning. But we, the, the initial guidance was it needed to be spent by the end of this calendar year. I'll, I'll see more details when I read it tomorrow morning.
You don't want to read it tonight after we're done? Are there any other questions?
He probably will, but tomorrow morning he'll report on it to us.
Kelly, there was one more question in those lists around liability. And I just, I think it's a good thing for
Oh yeah, you can go down far enough.
The public know. So I don't know Lori, if you, if you want to just address the liability thing. Cause there was lots of great information there around our school liability and then teacher liability and things like that, staff liability.
I actually have it up if you want me to just
That would be great. So I was just looking for
The bottom one. And so it, the information that we got from our attorneys is that should anyone become infected, that lawyers are, lawyers, employees are covered under workers comp if they're unable to come to work. And, and any student who thinks that they may have been infected at school or staff, that there would only be an issue if we were deemed negligent. That if we were not doing everything that we said we were going to do and following all of the guidance provided to ensure safety. And so seeing that we are doing all of those things and then some, there's no real concern over liability if someone becomes infected in school because we're not negligent if we're doing all the things that we're being told to do and then some. I think, is that most of it? Lori, did you want to add? I probably
Before we went on to another topic, I was just going to ask Leah or answer Leah's earlier question. So I'm going to tell myself as well, I just, I've just been in communication with Dr. Parkinson. And, but you know, it's timely, so I'm going to share. But he, but he does believe under the current conditions that it is reasonable to bring our pre-K through four in full time. We, no, no one can predict what's going to happen, you know, later on, but under the current conditions now. But yes, he believes that it's, it's reasonable for us to, to take those steps.
Thank you, Lori. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any last questions? I don't see any hands. Um, okay. Is there a motion to approve the district's reopening plan as recommended and presented by the superintendent?
I'll make that motion to approve the reopening plans.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lisa, seconded. And any last discussion? John?
Yeah, no, I just had, had a point just to make about, you know, the, just as we move forward with this. I had a Morris Pond teacher offer me some insight when they're wrapping up the school year and the summer was starting. He said, last year they had the benefit of getting FaceTime before COVID and building up a rapport with kids and the kids with each other. And as we move forward, every effort to make that type of connection with the, the students that are virtual needs to be made. But I think kind of a, you know, maybe an underthought of thing of this dynamic of us, you know, making this effort to have in-person school is no matter how it ends up in the long run at the end of the year, if cases develop and things of that nature. And we, you know, did eventually, you know, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but if we did eventually, you know, need to move to 100% virtual, any time that we're able to get during this time that we do have FaceTime, that in and of itself is a real value that we'll get out of this.
That's a good point, John. I hadn't thought about that. Andrea?
Am I muted?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, thanks. So I actually, knowing we were making this vote, I had, because I had all my questions answered ahead of time, which was very helpful. I did put together some thoughts on sort of my thought process to getting to this point on this vote. And I know so many people have already acknowledged all the hard work and I want to echo that because not only was it relatively short timeframe, you know, things just kept shifting. And the fact that everybody was so nimble to keep moving with that is, is amazing. And we know that everyone is trying to do their absolute best for Falmouth students and, and families. And I know that what we're being asked to vote on tonight are the plans that are required by the state. And the first thing I wanted to address was my interpretation of the difference between safety and safe. And so I completely believe that these plans have been made with safety foremost in everyone's minds. They're based on current medical advice and research. And we've already seen that changes have been made when new information becomes available. But this does not mean that the plans will make our students and staff 100% safe. So just wanted to make sure that we looked at those two different pieces. And in my mind, the biggest issue with implementing these plans is the number of students physically present in the schools and our classrooms and our buses. And I don't usually like to talk about my own student during school committee meetings because my focus when I'm wearing my school committee hat is on all students. But for full transparency, I wanted to explain our decision for the start of the school year. And so we've decided to keep our daughter in full remote learning. We have several reasons that led us to our decision, but the most important one is that we can. So our daughter is an eighth grader and can work independently. An adult can be at home with her and she's capable of doing her schoolwork remotely, even if there's no one at home for a time. I fully believe that it is important to think about how individual decisions affect our community and most especially in a pandemic, a situation where our actions very directly affect others. By keeping our daughter at home to join her school remotely, we are helping to keep our schools as safe as possible by increasing distances and freeing up space for a better in-person experience for those, for whatever reason, need to be there. So every student that stays home frees up valuable space for differing, for students with differing reasons that they cannot be remote. It isn't ideal, but nothing about our current situation is. So with all that said, I do want to say that I support the plans, both for their flexibility and their attention to the need for rigorous remote learning options. This isn't the remote learning of the spring, as well as providing those in-person options for students with an emphasis on our most vulnerable students. My vote is going to be a vote of trust in our superintendent and her team to keep up to date with all guidance from scientists, medical professionals and the state and local health agents to make the decisions to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. And honestly, I think that that's all we can really do. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrea.
Sorry, I was muted. My cat was meowing. Any other discussion? And I just had one other thing. So we've thanked everyone for the hard work. And I just want to acknowledge that the school committee has put in some serious hours and we're volunteers. But that didn't stop you guys from poring through, like seriously, it's like hundreds of pages of information and forming dozens of questions that I assume, I, I, I don't know how many there were actually, because I think a lot of people emailed Lori directly. But based on the length of the answers that we got back, it was definitely a lot. So thank you to all of you guys. So we have a sec of a motion and a second. And if there's no last discussion, it's a roll call vote and we'll start with Terry. And if there's no last discussion, it's a roll call vote and we'll start with Terry.
Terry, yes.
Melissa, Melissa, sorry.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So it passes unanimously. So you get to submit those beautiful plans next week. And I'm sorry that we ended up moving our meeting, everyone, and I appreciate your flexibility in moving it to meet the deadline that they then moved on us, but we didn't know. So we'll move on. The next item is acting on our capital plan. Patrick, did you need to say anything about it? Is there anything we need to know?
Those three items are, we've discussed them with the town. The last conversation with the town, they were, they expressed some optimism about being able to fund those, which was extremely encouraging to me. So if we could just approve those three and they'll be submitted to the town.
Sorry, animals. So just to clarify though, we're acting on the full capital plan, not just these three, correct?
No, you're what you're doing is acting on those three. Those are going to submit it. Those three are going to be that submitted the full capital plan. There's iterations every week.
Okay, right. All right. Thank you for clarifying. I'm glad I asked. I didn't misunderstand. Are there any Leah, go ahead.
So just a question, Patrick, around. So I see the first priority is those the ceiling, right?
Yep, yep. Continue with that.
Yes. In Morse pond. And my question is, when do we do this and how do we ensure it's getting done within the time period?
So we do this over many years. We're doing it right now. So in addition to to planning for COVID reentry, we get to do regular capital projects too. So it would be the the next phase of this would be done next summer.
Okay, so when students are out of the building?
Correct.
And okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the capital items for next year? Okay, is there a motion to approve this year's capital plan? Terry?
Make a motion to approve those three items.
For the capital?
For the capital plan.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure we're clear. Is there a second?
Second.
Natalie, any last discussion? So roll call vote. We'll start with Terry again.
Yes.
Melissa?
Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So the capital plan passes unanimously. Next is acting on the student handbooks. Who's taking this? Sonia?
We have not made any changes as there were not wide array of questions or feedback. The one thing we did, however, do, which was in response to the conversation at our last meeting, was removed in the COVID edit, remove the information around the waitlist for transportation. That part has been taken out. Aside from that, everything else stands as it was originally prepared through the policy subcommittee.
And I just wanted the subcommittee had made a or had a discussion and please weigh in if you want, is that the COVID section may need to be fluid. So as you're voting for this, being able to update it as needed based on new information, new guidance. So I would ask will that be a part of the motion?
Thank you.
Motion that includes the ability to adapt it in the future?
Yes.
Leah?
Great. That's that's great. I do have a question about the COVID insert, which I didn't ask last time and I I don't know why I didn't say this. I see this self isolation for COVID-19 positive cases is a minimum of 10 days and that they're not required to get a test. I had never seen this 10-day thing, so I was wondering where this guidance came from. And obviously, if we're fluid, like, that's great, we can change things, but I
So that was the direct language from DUCY that I had mentioned earlier. Kelly had talked about, you know, and being symptom-free after, you know, 72 hours of so that's what I want to have further conversations with Dr. Parkinson because, which is a reason why I want to be able to have more detail as we understand it. But this was this came right from the DUCY guidance of how we're supposed to respond. Or, you know, so whether and and then, you know, whether they actually need to have a negative test before they return, if they were positive, so do they need a negative? Or can they just be symptom-free? 10 days right after symptom doesn't mean that they'll come back to school right in 10 days, right? But they would be that they would be symptom-free. So I, yeah, we just need more clarification. That's what I had mentioned earlier.
Yeah, because it says once they've gone three days without a fever, so they'd only be symptom-free for possibly three days.
Right, but
Right.
The three days may be within that 10, the three days may be after the 10 or even longer, right? So it's and, right? So, you know, out 10 days, but if they still have any symptoms, they would still have to be out. So it's I just that that part seems I think I have clear. It's the the if you were positive, you know, and or if you took a test, you have to have that negative test before you can return. And how does that interplay with just monitoring the symptoms, right?
Yeah, so I'm I'm happy that we're fluid with this because the way it reads right now that you don't have to have a test, so that would make me nervous. And then this 10-day thing would make me super nervous and only three days out. So so, yes, I I'm in favor of this with the fluidity of it and update. That's great.
Terry?
Would the 10 days mean 10 school days, which would really be 14 days?
It's that that one is 10 days. Where, you know, the other, if we are, you know, isolating people through the contact contact tracing, you know, it's a 14-day.
Okay.
Oh, because the four the four the extra four days allow for the for the virus to actually become present. That makes sense, actually. But I mean, these are the things that they're going to constantly change and we just need to be able to adapt. So if there are edits or updates that have to happen to this, will they then come back to us as because what I wouldn't want is for the handbook to be changed and we just don't know. I don't mind not having to vote on it again, but oh, my
You'll absolutely get the updates as we would send to families as well as to, you know, to notify them. That's why I think we pulled this section, right? Because this is easier for us to share out than the entire handbook and trying to point out what might be changed. So so we want to be able to do this, but anytime this is changed, this would get out to families and certainly the school committee.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions? So is there a motion to approve the student handbooks, including future adaptations of the COVID insert? Terry?
Could I make the motion because it's from the policy committee, so I would love to make that motion.
Great. Thanks, Andrea. And any last questions or comments? All right, it's a roll call vote. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So the handbooks pass unanimously as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work that went into that. Next is, okay, so this is the acting on the adoption of the fuel efficiency vehicle policy, which you may recognize and remember that we had a first read on it forever ago and things got crazy and we never dealt with it. So now we're actually going to vote on it. Did anybody have any questions? I know it's been a while, so the copy of the policy was in the packet. Does anybody have any questions about it? Andrea?
Yeah, I guess I appreciate that update on the background of it because I did notice the date was the from 2016 that it was signed. So I guess my question is, it says that the town has made this decision and the school committee falls under it because of that. So can you just explain why why we have to vote into it? Because it already sounds like we are bound by the current way it's written.
So, oh, so Patrick, I don't know what he may explain something, but one of it, one the piece of it is, is that the town did, the town had already done this, but to become a green community, the school committee has to commit to it too, because we have our own vehicles. So we actually saw this in March was on our and I think just with everything happening with the school closures and the COVID that that it just, we just didn't follow up on it, but the town did ask us to revisit that because we can't get our green community designation without, you know, the school committee voting. So that's why it's coming forward. Patrick, do you want to add anything specific?
Just to confirm that the that we did take a look at all the school vehicles that we owned and they, in some cases, they're exempt from the policy, but the ones that are not exempt, they fall within the guidelines of the policy. So this is, we just, we confirmed that with our county contact on this and we're we're all looking good and we're in support of this.
John?
I'd like to put forth a motion to approve the adoption of the fuel efficient vehicle policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Andrea, and any last questions? Roll call again. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill? Bill, you're muted. Can you? I think
Yes.
Okay, I thought I was reading your lips right, but I had to be sure. Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. So that passes unanimously as well. We have a lot of action tonight, acting on the donation of instructional resources and materials to support accelerated learners. Somebody tell us about it. Sonia?
Sure, thank you. In the past several years, we've been working with Janice Barron, who has come in and provided professional learning to elementary teachers around how to differentiate for accelerated learners. Janice Barron is in the process of moving and wanted to gift our teachers. She she said that Falmouth has a special place for her and she wants to gift our teachers a pretty wide array of resources that she uses in the professional learning and she knows that our teachers really connected with. And so some of them are for direct instruction, you know, with students and some of them are meant to just be informative resources for our teachers to build lessons. So she'd like to give those to us to share with our teachers in professional libraries and classrooms.
Nice, so nice. Is there a motion to accept the donation of instructional materials for accelerated learners valued at $950? Oh, sorry, I was looking at the top. Melissa? Thank you. And is there a second? Natalie? Any questions about this donation? Roll call vote. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
Kelly Welch also a yes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't looking up. I didn't see it. I didn't hear you. So next is acting on the superintendent's contract. And I just want to acknowledge for people who may pay very close attention that realized that Lori has just finished her second year here, so there is another year on her contract. It would normally go until next June, but the committee has elected to renew her contract now and provide greater stability for the district in a time of complete chaos and to also, you know, acknowledge the confidence that we have in her. And so this contract would take us through June of 2025, just for the public to know why we're doing it now, when normally they might not have expected it until next year. So and this is something that we had to negotiate and have handled it in executive session and then we bring it to open meetings so that the public knows that we did this. And so is there a motion to approve the new contract with Dr. Dorr through 2025 as you saw in executive session? Everybody wants to get to make the motion. Melissa, you get it. Natalie, would you like to make the second?
I second.
Any discussion or comments? John?
Salaries raises and contracts are always awkward to discuss in public. We we all respect Dr. Dorr. Due to the COVID pandemic, a lot of people in Falmouth are on extended unemployment, relying on stimulus checks and the service center. Others went back to work with a 10% pay cut as the companies are rethinking their business model or some other companies, you know, make and closing, or if they haven't already. Many Cape and or multiple Cape and Island districts implemented salary freezes. I sincerely endorse Dr. Dorr and the future in Falmouth. But because many of our neighbors fall into one of the difficult categories that I just mentioned, and they're all part of our tax base that pays for the district's operations, because of that, I'll be voting no on the contract as proposed since it includes a raise of 1%. Thank you.
Bill?
I will be voting no on the contract. In reference to the contract, I think there's a difference between contract and evaluation. Lori's evaluation has been exemplary. The two years, I think she has done a fantastic job. By voting no is not to degrade anything that she has done. I appreciate all her efforts, but based on a lot of things that John said, based on the optics of what is going on with COVID in Massachusetts and all over, all over, I have to vote no.
Andrea?
Yeah, I did just want to sort of acknowledge those comments and understand that we're all very aware of our community and many people that have lost jobs and who are unemployed or underemployed. Much of that out of anyone's control because businesses have closed or have been forced to close because of the pandemic. But I did just also want to make sure that we recognize that the schools have not. And not only have they not closed in any way, whether that's remote or in person or somewhere in between. In fact, the job has, as I look at it, with the state asking us to come up with three plans, it's it's tripled. So, you know, I just want to make that distinction between things that happened because of this that are outside of control and recognizing that in other areas, and that's a lot of other professions, the work has actually increased, the expectations have increased.
Any last comments? Melissa?
Coming from somebody who has worked through the the pandemic, the COVID time, the March to today time. I want to really acknowledge Lori's exceptional hard work and to piggyback on what Andrea said, she's had to come up on three different plans. I can honestly say that I know that she's not taken any time to herself, including nights that are sleepless, weekends that are working weekends. There are no holidays. I I appreciate John's sentiments on our neighbors that are not as fortunate and are relying on places like Service Center and some of our other amazing programs in our home Falmouth. But I also think that it's our job to acknowledge and appreciate and reflect appreciate and reflect the hard work that Lori has done. So I will be supporting this.
And I will just add and retain, because we, as a community, can't afford to replace her. Any last comments? It's a roll call vote. Terry?
Yes, Terry Maderas.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finary, no.
Lisa?
Lisa Heart, yes.
Bill?
Bill Ryder, no.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinalopoulos, yes.
Kelly Welch, and I'm also a yes. That motion passes. All right, thank you everybody for those. Now just routine stuff. Approving the minutes from our July 24th meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from our July 24th? Oh, mine are out of order, sorry. July 24th meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Andrea, thank you. Any discussion? So roll call vote. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Sorry, Melissa Keith, yes.
Thanks. Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finary, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Heart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes. That passes unanimously. And next is our minutes from July 28th. Approving the minutes, is there a motion to approve July 28th minutes? Terry?
Thank you. I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lisa, thank you. And discussion or questions, comments, anything? Roll call. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finary, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Heart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinalopoulos, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes, so that passes unanimously as well. Yeah, Leah, go ahead.
We have two July 28th meetings in there, because we had our retreat also.
Well, it was all one, there's two, I see what you're saying. You want to do them separately even though they were all-
I, I think they have to be because we adjourned, right?
No, we did not, we did not adjourn. We recessed.
Oh, we recessed. Okay, great.
Yeah, it actually says in the minutes that we recessed and then just reopened. Good question, though. Thank you for, for paying attention. I appreciate it. So I only have, I think, two quick things. One, I am pretty sure I sent out an email, but I'm going to say it out loud again just in case to make sure you have September 29th for our joint session with the Select Board for Training on Equity, Inclusion, Diversity, Bias. Lori, I think it, you told me 6:30, is that correct? Do you know?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, 6:30 to 8:30.
6:30 to 8:30 on the 29th of September, so please hold that. And then acknowledging that we just don't have time to get together so quickly to finish our goal setting. I'm just going to push off the rest of our goal setting until after we have that training and we'll look to plan it for early October. There's just too many balls in the air right now, I think, to take that on. And then, oh, that's all I have, is any other committee, oh, everybody's got stuff. Melissa, Terry?
So I was kind of thinking that maybe since we're asking our students to, well, let me start with this. I was kind of thinking that maybe we could meet in person for perhaps our next meeting. Although I love the convenience of meeting remotely. I think it's really important for us to show a united front that these are things that we're expecting of our students and our staff, and we're still sitting wherever it is that we're sitting. I think it's, and I've always been one to say, if I'm going to ask something of you, that I expect that of myself. And this instance is no different. So I don't know if it will happen for our next meeting, but I would like to definitely put that out there that it, it's important to me. I also think, another thing that's important to me as I think of our students, not just our littlest students, but, you know, the entire spectrum, that if we had an opportunity to perhaps ride a bus, all of us together, and see exactly what that looks like, and then go and sit in a classroom, whether it be a elementary classroom, or a Morse Pond, Lawrence, the high school, I don't think we need to sit there for six hours, but I think that that's, it follows in the same sentiment of these are things I expect of you. And I think that it's important for us to to possibly do that. I understand that the teachers are, and the staff are working hard to make sure that the classrooms are where they want them to be. It doesn't have to be perfect. I just think that it, it's important for us to see exactly what we're asking our students and our staff in this time.
So the thing I can say is that I will ask town leadership, because even though we're allowed to open school according to DSE and the governor's guidance, the town of Falmouth had prohibited us from meeting in person, so I'll look into it, and as soon as they lift that rule, I think it's a great idea.
Maybe we could cite town meeting, because we met in person for town meeting.
So I will look into it and I'll let everybody know whatever I find out.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Terry, did you have something? You were next.
I was going to say just what Melissa said, and I'm glad she got first because I wasn't thinking of the buses. I think that's a good addition, so.
Okay, thanks. Leah, did you have something?
Yes. So I was running on the track the other day, and very nice. So that was something that I had voted with the school committee right before I left, and that, now I'm getting to see the, the track. So it was very nice. It was a very nice run for me on that track. But one question that came to mind is, that is, it's public access to that track, correct? And I was wondering if maybe we could have some signs there around social distancing and mask wearing. I didn't see, there were people who were pretty close. It was hard for me to negotiate when people were on the track. I don't know what the signage piece is with the town right now, but whatever signs are being used around promoting mask wearing and social distancing, I'd love to see it over there.
And I'll piggyback on that and add that if we end up being able to do something, we should probably think about the new tennis courts at Lawrence, because I drove by and they look almost done, and I imagine as soon as they are done, people are going to be there because they look really, really nice. Any other committee member reports or updates? John?
Just to reaffirm too, from the collaborative discussion earlier, that the, the shipment of masks that are at a really exceptionally low price point arrived in Newark the other day, and we're going to test them out, and if that's the case, it'll be a huge savings for all the districts across the Cape, and I'm very excited about that.
Thanks. Oh, actually, I should do actually a negotiations update and just let everyone know that we're still, like Lori had mentioned earlier, we've been meeting about twice a week with the union for, I don't know how many weeks, three, four? I don't know. It always feels like longer. But we are still working through a memorandum of, of understanding or agreement or whichever one it is. So those meetings are still happening. Any last updates? Okay. I make a motion that we move into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, specifically the open meeting law, and we'll be doing so to approve minutes. It's anticipated that the school committee will not return to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
I missed who that was. Andrea? Andrea, thank you. Roll call vote. Terry?
Yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
John Finary, yes.
Lisa?
The Heart, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinalopoulos, yes.
And Kelly Welch, also a yes, so it passes unanimously. I will see you in executive session. You should have an email from Lori with the new Zoom invite. If you can't find it, email or text me and I'll get it to you.